Okay, well, welcome to the John Stark Public Hearing. We, as you know, we start our budget process in the summer. We begin or continue, we look to our strategic plan. We look at what our curriculum needs are, what individual student needs are through the IEP process. We look at enrollment, we look at our CIP and look at building needs. And we collaborate through the fall to develop a budget. And so the driving forces and ideas behind our budget and behind that process are that we seek to address the academic, social, and emotional needs of our students. That's first and foremost. Along with, and this is representative of our Portrait of a Learner, which was developed last year by our community. We are, we want to support our students in becoming respectful collaborators, effective communicators, and knowledgeable problem solvers and creators. We want to make sure that we are meeting the needs of each of our learners. And I think baked into how we do business is we're looking, and I apologize for the dogs barking in the background. We focus on continuous improvement, be it through our PLCs where teachers look at their practice and discuss the impact it's having on student achievement, to my admin team in our meetings where we look at is what we're doing working to support our students? And are we doing it in the most efficient way possible to be mindful of taxpayers? As you all know, and I know as the previous discussion illuminated, this has been quite a year. And so on reflecting on that year, COVID presented so many challenges. And throughout it, we tried to balance conflicting needs. I, I said to somebody this past week, you know, there really aren't right answers here. There are just competing needs that have to be calibrated and then recalibrated. And there is so little certainty and we're just all trying to navigate it together. And you know, we have this goal of connecting with students each day. And I've seen so many examples of creativity, community kindness, even through disagreements on how things should be done and how we should navigate challenges, whether we should be remote for an additional week. And through all of that, I see people striving to care for one another. And so for that reason, I'm incredibly proud to be part of this community. I'm incredibly proud of the people who work in this district. And for how we've been able to rise to the challenges that have been presented to us. And that we're all going through together. So tonight, I'm here to talk about really Articles 3, 4, and 5. Our budget is Article 3. Article 4 is the collective bargaining agreement negotiated with our Teachers Association. And then the last one deals with the contingency fund, establishing a contingency fund. We are currently operating under a budget of $13,735,372. The proposed budget that we're putting forth is $14,425,926. That is a $690,533 increase or a 5.03% from the current budget. The default budget is just a little bit shy of that, $14,424,397. That increase, that 5.03 increase, 2.37% of that, almost half of that, reflects an accounting change that we put in place. John Stark students have always been supported by the IDA grant. The IDA grant is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. And it supports students who have, you know, additional needs that need to be addressed. And so as I said, we've always, and John Stark students have always had access to these funds. They were, and they actually currently this year are, those funds are consolidated at the SAU. What we're seeking to do, and what we believe is the right way to do this, is to have the funds that are used to support John Stark students in the John Stark budget. In order to spend something through a budget, you need to put it into your budget. And so that's why there's a $325,000 increase to the budget. That increase represents us taking the funds from the consolidated grant and building it into the John Stark budget. It does not increase taxes locally. So if you take from our proposed budget, the $690,553 increase, subtract the $325,000 that doesn't have a tax impact, you, we're dealing with a $365,553, no, $553.93 or a 2.66% increase. That's still a pretty big increase. And given that we were really striving to come in recognizing the times that we're living in. The other factor that had a really big impact on our budget this year is a, is a change, a rate change for the New Hampshire Retirement Fund. We are, right now, we are contributing for our teachers 17.8% of their salary into the New Hampshire Retirement Fund. That's the employer contribution rate. Next year, that rate increases to 21.02%. So there's a 3.22% increase on the salary line. John Stark salaries and benefits make up 70% of our budget. So this is a big number. So the, the increase with tax impact is a 2.66% increase. 1.28% of that is that mandatory retirement contribution rate change. Our healthcare premiums also increased. Last year, we were, I think, fortunate to come into these budget discussions with a negative GMR. The GMR is the guaranteed maximum rate that our healthcare premiums will be increased. And, and so we went into this knowing there was going to be a cut within the healthcare lines. We go into this conversation this year knowing that our healthcare premiums will not increase more than 7.3%. 7.3% is what we need the budget for. That is $58,810. Other increases, the ones in black are, are in the default budget. We've got our SAU district shares. The SAU, there's a calculation based on enrollment and equalized value that gets, that gets formulated each year. And the SAU budget gets charged back to the districts. The SAU saw some increases that related to our retirement and healthcare at the SAU. The other increase that was approved by the SAU board was a, an additional technology position at the SAU. So that increases the $52,197. On the contracted services line, if you go through the object budget, actually if you go through either budget, function or object, the contracted services line is, you're going to see probably the biggest increase within the whole budget. That 352,851, there's, there's some salary increases. There is speech or speech contracted service, which is built into IEPs. But the biggest increase is the program that we started this year at John Stark that enabled us to bring back some students who are in out-of-district placement. So although it's a big increase, it is partially offset by a cut in our out-of-district placement line, our out-of-district tuition, and also our special education transportation. We send our students to CRTC and they do, they go and they participate in some really wonderful programs there. There was an increase in the tuition line and there was an increase in the transportation. We also had some increases in our general transportation lines. So all of those equal more than what we're presenting as a budget. And so what you'll also see is $300,000 worth of cuts within our proposed budget that, that offset these. I'll get into that a little bit more in a minute. So our default budget, a default budget is a formula. It consists of our current year budget minus one-time expenditures, plus or minus contractual obligations and, you know, anything related mandated by law. So our default budget this year is $14,424,398. That is $1,528 less than the proposed budget we're putting forward tonight. You know, putting, showing this in a different way. You've got the default budget, our current budget, that is a $689,026 increase. And then the difference between our proposed and our default is the $1,500. There's a report, it's on the website, if you're looking at the website, that shows their default budget during versus our proposed budget. And you can see the difference between those lines. Primarily, as you go through the budget, you will see where, you know, we've worked very hard to cut where we could. As I said, the largest increase was within that contracted service line. And we had offsetting in out-of-district tuition and transportation. Within the salary line, the, the difference between the two budgets, the default and proposed, there are some census changes, we've reallocated positions. But the, the difference between those two lines really represents, one, we are doing a NEASK self-study this year. And NEASK is the organization that does accreditation. And so accreditations are something schools, you know, all around the country do. And it's a, it's a enriching process. It's a good opportunity for the staff and to look at what they're doing, evaluate that, take, take that time to then report out, have people come in and give feedback about how, how we operate and how we're doing business. The other thing is the accreditation as our kids apply to college. It is, we, we want John Stark to be accredited for that process. It is not looked at well when a school loses accreditation for some reason. So we're embarking in that process. And we do pay people who take on additional obligations during that additional responsibilities because it's an awful lot of work. And so there'll be a steering team that guides that work. And it really, a lot of it is teacher-driven. And having gone through it a number of times, it is definitely a worthwhile experience. The other thing that we're doing and putting forward that we feel is pretty important is changing how we do summer school. We are anticipating that there, there are going to be more needs this year. And our summer school remediation has been primarily technology-based. And we see that as problematic coming out of COVID. And, and so there are additions to our salary lines to pay for staff to do, work with students over the summer to help make sure they're where they need to be going into next year. The benefits line, that's the $4,000 is associated retirement and GMR related to the increase in salaries. Purchase services, it's the shift from out-of-district tuition to in-school programming. It's also, you know, the coaches, the SAU shares, district shares. Under our property service line, that is primarily, there are some increases you'll see in our computer repair and maintenance lines, increase to upkeep, repairs, and grounds maintenance. Under other purchase services, that's the cut to out-of-district tuition. And, you know, the other lines are proposing, like the supplies. Gary really sharpened his pencil within the supplies lines so that we can propose additional cuts to offset increases in other lines. That, that transfers line is the grants and food service. Actually, not food service, right, Chris? In the John Stark?
It's still food service.
It is, okay.
Yeah, they still operate under the Food Service Fund.
So as I said before, the increase from this budget to our default is the $689,025. The increase from the default to the proposed is $1,528, getting us to the full proposed increase of $690,553.93. This is the, by object, the visual of our proposed budget. And 70% of that is in salaries and benefits. Zach, do you want?
Yeah, why don't we, yeah, if we want to sort of break up the articles and we can, we can sort of open it up to some public comment. Or sorry, I'll start with comments or questions from the board and then move on to sort of the public comment piece. And then we can circle back on the rest of the warrants as well. So any questions from the board on Article 3? Okay. Excellent. So, and then from members of the public, any, any, any questions from members of the public? And I guess what I'll do is I'll remind everybody, the way that we will do public comment, and actually, I don't see the...
Because I'm in shared screen, I could come out of it and if I need to go back in.
You know what, let's actually, let's get through the rest of the warrants then. And then I'll, then I'll open to the public comment. That way we don't have to come back in and out. We're going to get through these warrants pretty quickly, so.
Okay.
Okay, yep.
So the next article is Article 4, which is our collective bargaining agreement. Our teachers came to the negotiations as community members, as neighbors, as partners in, in this whole challenging year. And they did, they sought only to extend the current contract. And so how teachers' contracts usually work is there's a grid that is negotiated. And the grid of salaries, generally each contract gets, gets richer. And then teachers also move based on their experience and their, the, the education that they've invested in themselves. They, they move on that grid. This year, this represents teachers just moving up within the same contract. And so negotiated, no language, this is just teachers moving up one step on the grid. That, they are, the, the raises within that or the increases within that, our teachers are getting, if this is passed, between $500 and $1,000 with the average increase being $868 or an average 1.5% increase. One thing I want to note when talking about this is that 7.3 guaranteed maximum increase in our healthcare insurance. Our teachers share, they pay some of the healthcare costs. And so that increase also impacts them. And so they're, they're sharing in those costs. So that's the teacher's contract. And, and so these are the items with tax impact. And so what I just presented you, the proposed, projected rate for the proposed budget for Henniker is $6.13 per thousand. For Ware is $7.53 per thousand. The Warren Article 4, the collective bargaining unit negotiation, is a four cent raise in Henniker and a six per thousand in Ware. So the projected tax rate increase is 22 cents in, per thousand in Henniker and 70 cents per thousand in Ware. That is for Henniker, $55 on a $250,000 house, and in Ware, $175.
Okay, guys, before we jump into Article 5 here, is there any other question on the teacher contract and those costs associated with it? The only question I'll have for you, Jackie, if you can just go back one, one quick slide. So this is inclusive of any revenue projections for the upcoming year as well, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to be double sure, so.
Oh, yes, thank you, thank you for that. So we, interestingly, John Stark did not experience a decline in enrollment. We're actually up by three students from last year. But as, as I've talked about in each of the other districts, we, our enrollment's down and that has, is, is having a significant impact on our adequacy funding in, in the other districts.
Yeah, that, that was why I...
Calculate that, yes.
Yeah, I wasn't certain if that was, I couldn't, I couldn't remember where we were here with John Stark. I just wanted to be sure that even though all of the presentation for the budget had a lot, had everything to do with the expenditure side and sort of the pass-through sort of revenue piece that's here. What we haven't talked about in explicit detail is what we're expecting for unreserved fund balance as well as potential adequacy. But this, this sort of cuts right to the, to the chase and says this is what the impact would be of these expenditures and all the revenue needed to support it, so.
Yes, and I'll let Chris speak to that because he actually put together a revenue sheet, which should also be a link on the website.
Oh, excellent, thank you.
Yeah, so the, John Stark is still seeing a decrease to their adequacy. So it's a, it's a small decrease on the adequacy side for the Henniker portion and then a $400,000 decrease on the Ware portion. And then there are slight increases on the state education tax. So that, there are, there are definitely some revenue shortfalls anticipated for next year as well for John Stark.
Okay.
But those are reflected in this number.
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you for clarifying that, I just wanted to make sure we, we paused on that, what we were talking about.
Thank you, I, I had it written down and didn't...
Any other questions, guys, on this one? Yeah, Jim?
I, I was just curious, maybe I'm missing something here. But if the enrollment numbers are basically flat, why are we, why do we have less adequacy funding? I don't get it.
It likely has to do with the free and reduced numbers, which is where we're really crossing our fingers that the, the calculation is, is in some way amended by legislation. Because this year, everyone's free, so they don't have the incentive to fill out the...
I didn't realize that was lumped into this, so.
And so how they, this, this is, I think, fair, pretty fascinating, how adequacy is built. There's the base adequacy, $3,700 per, per child number that we get. And then layered on that is third grade reading scores. If we have students who are below where they need to be for third grade reading, we get additional funds. If we have students who qualify for free and reduced, we get additional adequacy. If we have students who are identified, we get additional adequacy. And that, that, that comes to be a really large number. And so the, Chris referenced free and reduced lunch. This year, the federal government did a waiver allowing us, because of the crisis, to provide meals for any, any child under 18 in our communities, whether they're in school or not. But because everyone qualifies, they aren't filling out the forms. And without the forms, we don't get credit for, for that need within our schools. Because the adequacy is supposed to help fill the needs within our schools. And so although the needs are being met, I do think a lot of people are hoping, and I hope, that it's a short-term need and, and that, and so they aren't filling, they don't have to fill out the forms, so they're not.
So just, just a quick note too, I, some, a light bulb just kind of struck on me as I was looking at the numbers. I believe that the, the numbers that we're seeing from 2021 are actually inclusive of the one-time funding that John Stark had decided to put into their capital reserve. They put the, the Warren out there and the voters had voted for that. So that, that number actually aligns pretty well with the amount that got put into that capital reserve. So that's obviously a factor as well.
And a lot, and there were a lot of districts that decided to just roll that into their, their operating budget and didn't establish the fund. And, and, you know, the SAU 24 districts chose to do the funds. We, we had some guidance from the finance committee. And I think that ended up being a very smart...
Read.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Good questions, guys, anything else? Okay, thank you, go ahead with Article 5, please, Jackie.
Okay, and so the last article is Article 5. And so this is asking the voters to authorize a authority to retain year-end unassigned general funds in an amount not to exceed in any fiscal year, 5% of the current fiscal year's net assessment. And so it's a contingency fund. This has been, the contingency fund idea has been in existence for, for a long time. Henniker has had one for a long time, lots of districts have it. Ware and John Stark have not had it. And why we're talking about it again is there were some pretty significant changes that were passed in September to the law that authorizes this fund. And it was a natural time to reconsider whether we wanted to try to establish this. The changes are, it went from 2.5% of the fiscal year's net assessment to 5%. And that is an up-to amount, it doesn't mean the board has to put the full 5% in. You can, Chris played out what that full 5% would be, looking back for the last four years. So you can see, you know, we're upwards of $450,000 is what represents our net assessment, 5% of our net assessment. Once you've established, if you did decide to put in the money, if authorized, if it passed, and then you decided to put in the money each year, he also played out what the, the change amount would be. So the first change was that it went up from 2.5 to 5%. The next change is it was originally for emergencies. was originally for emergencies, or if authorized by the Commissioner of Education. Or if used as a revenue source to reduce the tax rate. And and so districts were were using it almost as a, to release valve to kind of maintain a more steady tax rate. The emergency provision and the authorization by the Commissioner of Education, both of those pieces are out of the new statute. And so so it would be to authorize, to put out there for the public to authorize the John Stark Board to establish this contingency fund. It would then be your authority, what goes into it. To spend it, however, you need to have a public hearing. And each year, you have to have a report included in the annual report about about what you did with the money. Chris, do you have anything to add to that? Because I said you were going to do this one and then I took over, I apologize.
Yeah, just to, just to add, the the net, just for anyone that might not know, the the net assessment, that is the amount of the tax assessment and then adding in the state education tax dollars that we receive also from the town. So that's, that's what that's calculated on. And just to, just to note, the, on the municipal side of things, this is actually, this is actually something that they do from year to year without adopting an RSA. So when this, when this was established, it was, it was looking to give the, give the school districts that flexibility that the towns already have.
Thank you for clarifying that, I I referred to it as equalized valuation earlier, and I I realized that mistake. So thank you for for being clear on what that net assessment figure represents. Okay, this is what we talked about earlier, and there they all are. Any other discussion from the board or thoughts from the board or Jackie, or is, have you got anything else to present here?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, excellent, so real quick, last call for any questions or thoughts from the board before I open it to public comment. I don't actually hear any. Oh, yeah, go ahead, Jim.
I just wanted to say, I ran into this problem at the HCS hearing. For some reason, I don't know if it's because of a setting in Zoom, but when you go to the participants list, you can't choose to raise a hand, it's not an option.
I was just going to say that, actually, I was just looking to see that that is not an option, in fact, you're right.
You're going to have to find a different way for the public to say they'd like to speak.
Yeah, I think without it turning into mayhem here, I think, oh, wait a second, I see, I saw hands going, oh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I hope it is an option. I think it might be whether or not you've downloaded the most recent Zoom client.
All right.
Yeah.
Could, could, that might be the problem. Unmute, though. Maybe.
Says I'm up to date. Well, I'll tell you what. If you have a raise hand button in the participants window, please use it. We'll start with that as the first phase to this. If if I don't see anybody raising hands, then I will ask, hopefully without it turning into a pandemonium that people would unmute themselves and and speak. But let's, let's start with seeing if folks have the ability to raise their hand. I don't see anybody rushing to the virtual microphone here. Okay, and then if anybody is is still interested in public comment, please unmute yourself and and introduce yourself and I will call on you.
Okay, I have my
Oh, hold on, I've got, yep, Chris, yep, go ahead.
I just would like to clarify something about Article Five. In the town, we have what's called a overlay or an unexpendited fund balance. Is that the equivalent of this reserve in Article Five?
I don't, I don't believe so, I believe the, what you're, I think, maybe referring to is, what we would also have is an unreserved fund balance. It's the revenue that is left over at the end of one year and goes into the next year? Is that, is that what you're referring to, or is it, is it a different mechanism?
Well, in the town, it's a requirement to keep a a small balance for something such as rebates or veteran benefits that are unanticipated, unforeseen requirements of of ordinances and laws that were already passed.
I see.
And it's maintained at a certain level. And then when the tax rate is set in October, they look at that and determine what amount they need to keep for next year. And so it's a functional fund. And it can't, it's, you can't use it for just anything. So I didn't know whether this was equivalent in that way.
I, yes, I believe it was intended to be, because there's not such a mechanism for school districts. And so the intention was to create a similar that similar thing. Chris, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, that that's my understanding as well, is is that when that RSA was adopted, I mean, it might, it might have changed things slightly when when the the revisions were made this year, removing the emergency nature of it. That that's something that we had just been informed of this week by the DOE. So we're, we're kind of still working through that piece of information. But prior to that, the 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 understanding of the fund was always that it was to look to have the same flexibilities as the municipal side.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the question. Anybody else wish to make public comment, please unmute yourself? I don't think we have too many other members of the public on the call, candidly. Okay. Seeing that nobody else wishes to come off of mute to speak publicly, I'm going to end the public hearing and resume the rest of our regular school board business for the night. Thank you very much, Jackie, Chris, the rest of the administration for the presentation this evening, well done.